Good morning, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning.
Morning.
Y'all asleep? This is the, uh, this is a work session, uh, of the, uh, of the Assembly, in the Assembly Hall for the budget preparation, proposed 2014 budget presentation. Uh, we're at 901 Main Street, excuse me, in Conyers, Georgia, 312. Uh, today is Tuesday, November the 18th. It's now nine o'clock AM or nine ten AM, and, uh, we will call this meeting to order for the budget presentation. And, uh, at this time, call item number two, uh, the DFACS, D C C F, Department of Family and Children's Services, is that correct, problem? Okay. Yes. How are you doing this morning?
Break her.
Good morning.
Good morning.
My name is Veronica Parrott, and I am the Director at Rockdale County DFACS. Um, this is new to me, so tell me if I'm not doing it correctly. So, um, first, I'm, our agency is asking, um, for 2015 for $65,000, uh, to continue to support our children and families, um, here in Rockdale County. And that is based on the need that we have with the community. Um, we do do a lot of general assistance, and we also have children who are in foster care, who actually need some assistance in, um, offsetting, um, support that is not covered through the federal government. Um, with that, we're asking, because there are times when we have children with Christmas, uh, that need assistance with Christmas, and that is a major, um, support. Last year, we did, uh, request $4,000 for Christmas to assist our teenagers, and of that $4,000, we used it. Um, we also allocate that money because at around this time of the year, or close to Christmas, we have children who come in at the last minute, who doesn't have the support that they need. So, we have that. We also have general assistance. For 2014, we allocated about $25,000 to, um, support the people of our community, and of that $25,000, this year so far, we've used 82% of the $25,000, and that's a part of the $65,000. Um, we also have children who might need some academic tutoring. Um, we also have families that we allow the children to remain in the homes with the parents that might need some assistance, um, to enhance the parents' ability to ensure a safe environment. We also have children who might need some services, such as counseling, um, educational tutoring, that the parents may not be financially able to provide support, and we use that money, um, also for such as that. Uh, we also have children who are in our community, who are, may not be United States citizens, and with that, they are not able to receive federal, um, dollars. So, we have to pay for their medicals, and we have to use county funds for that, because they're not, um, like I say, American citizens. Um, they're not, um, legal, sorry, here in the United States.
Are they charged to co-pay? Say that again. Are they charged to co-pay when services are received?
The, um, illegal immigrants, we actually have to pay for their, because they do not qualify for Medicaid.
Right.
So, we have to pay for everything out of our dollars.
So, no co-pay is requested at all, even if they could pay?
The co-pay, no, we do not, especially for those who are in foster care. This is for children who are in foster care.
That makes sense.
Um, for the ones that are off, the families who are not, the children who are not in foster care, if they have, which we do also for those who are actually American citizens, if they're employed, uh, we find out whether or not they have any type of private insurance. If they have private insurance, we do ask them to provide that in any, um, difference that is needed. We can support, we can offset that cost. Yes.
Is it very often that you have, um, children who are illegal?
Very, very little.
I would think so.
Yes.
Thank you.
Um, we also have, there are times that the foster parents may ask for, um, travel expenses for a child, um, and we pay for that. Haircuts for children, um, school pictures, and any type of sports activity that may be outside of the cost. The state, I believe, allow us $250 for, uh, those services, so anything beyond that, we offset, so that the children can continue to be active in their community.
What was your budget request for last year?
The same amount. And actually, we were really, really close to the door last year, um, for that, and this year, we're at a little over, almost about at 80%. We're a little more, about that much now. And we have still a month through December, um, what, a month and a half left to use what we have in our current budget.
Ms. Parrott, let me, first of all, welcome aboard and welcome to Rockdale County.
Thank you.
And you're doing a great job, by the way.
Oh, thank you.
I want to tell you that you're doing an outstanding job. It's not easy for folks to come up to a podium and a microphone, especially in front of an audience like this, and be able to articulate and get a message across. We certainly appreciate you. You can, you can relax a little bit. All right? We appreciate what your agency is doing in our community. Let me just ask, uh, does your agency partner up with some of the other local agencies in the community, or perhaps some of the nonprofit groups, or churches, or faith-based community to assist with some of the everyday requests that you're, that you're trying to meet in terms of the people in the community?
Um, we have not asked to that aspect, but they do assist us with, um, Christmas for our younger children. They do, and they focus on children zero to 12. Actually, yesterday, I received, um, a request from one of the local communities. It's a mentoring program here. They've asked to sponsor 50 families for our agency.
Wonderful, wonderful.
Yes, and that's ages 12, zero to 12. Uh, teenagers are the ones that we actually request the money from the board to support the teens, because even Clark Howard, um, they provide Christmas for the state of Georgia for children who are in need. And, um, we've, um, supplied that list for our children, but of course, they, once again, they only focus on the younger children, so it leaves our teens. But as for, with the community-based ministry, as for financial support, we have not received financial, but we have received, um, items such as care packages.
Right.
For our children.
And that's really what I was leading to.
Yes.
Because I think more than, uh, helping is more than giving money.
Yes.
Helping can sometimes be referring someone to another agency who provides some of the same kind of needs, whether it be clothing, or food, or in some cases, even transportation. Um, there are different agencies. Rockdale County has a slew of different agencies in our community that care, and I was asking because $65,000 is not a lot of money, and, um, however, uh, I do appreciate you explaining to us specifically where you're focusing those dollars, and you're saying primarily on the teenage, uh, population that, uh, come in and out of your agency for assistance. Is that correct?
That's for the Christmas, but as for, their overall dollars will be all age group.
I follow you.
Yes.
Okay. And this is offsetting any state or federal funding that you may receive?
That is correct.
Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
And let me say that, um, I think that a lot of people are unaware of the fact that the teens are not served. Um, the community definitely, uh, is, is told that you guys supply the list of families and names of children, so at no time have I ever been made aware that we're not serving our teens in that population.
As for, um, like I said, once again, it's around our Christmas needs, um, with our teens, but I know, um, we also receive, some of the attorneys will be sponsoring, um, some of our children this year as well. This is going to be a first, um, and that's because I'm out trying to speak and also having some of my, um, employees assist with that. But, um, as for, like I said, once again, we do have the churches here in the community, um, that also kind of look out for the employees as well, because they know that need that support. Um, as for maybe like cookouts or something like that nature, to kind of do a self-care for the employees. Um, as for, um, like I said, we have the clothing. Uh, we have not had the food support. Um, I've not had anyone to contact us to say that if we have a family in need of any food service, and those will be our families, um, who are, children are not in foster care. We do have what we call our family preservation families. Those are families that we cut, provide ongoing services to, and their children are not in care, and we put preventive services in there to prevent those children from being removed from the homes.
Agreed.
So, you also listed on the, um, one of the last pages of your submission, the average number of families receiving food stamp benefits per month, or 6,946?
And it's probably have increased. That was the year 2013. Um, I don't have-
So, just, just in Rockdale County?
Yes. Um, yes, because our information has to be for the service, families we service here in Rockdale.
So, if we have about 85,000 residents, this is 6,900 families?
And it's probably, like I said, once again, has increased because of economy, certain things that are going on. Our lobby continues to stay full with people who are coming in for assistance.
And you guys don't even have the DFAC, the CAPS services there anymore, so that doesn't count CAPS services, correct?
That, no, it doesn't. The CAPS services are actually a different entity in a different location, but you're right.
And they're in Henry County, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. And, um, does that include Tana, or that would be in Henry County as well?
Um, we have a representative, um, in our office now, full-time. I request that because we do have people coming in seeking services, and instead of reaching out to, um, Henry and Clayton County, because they're within our region, um, we do have an employee who's in our office now, um, Monday through Friday, but she only has set days that she actually see clients in the office.
And so, what, what opportunities do you have in your office for families who may be receiving benefits, like food stamps and things like that? What links do you have to the Department of Labor or services do you have available in your office?
We do not have the Department of Labor in our office. Our office, um, the part of our program, Office of Family and Independence, Office of Family Independent Services, they did a whole new reconstruction for year 2014, and, which has created a lot of, uh, ways that the agency is doing things now. Um, in our office, we have what we call IKEAs, who actually key in a lot of the information that is sent, because the families, they do not have to come into the office, um, to apply for food stamps, uh, anymore. Also for Medicaid, they can do that from the comfort of their homes, and so, they've also, they've streamlined the staff that are in the local offices now. So, we do not have the Department of Labor in our office, and I think that was something that we used to provide some type of support, but I do know that that's no longer-
Well, just, just to get people back to work, it, and, of course, would be, I think, helpful. Um, I think most people would be staggered to know, it's, you, you claim that y'all pay out over $2,100,000 a month in food stamp benefits?
Oh, yes, that's a, that's a lot. We have, there are some families that actually receive about $1,500 a month. You're looking at our younger popul-
And food stamps?
Oh, yes. Younger populations.
Commissioner, you got to keep in mind, the unemployment rate is just still pretty stagnant.
No, no, I do, they do, and that's why I asked if there were, uh, any links to the Department of Labor about job opportunities and things like that in your office, or, uh, you know, information pieces for people to get back to work.
Now, as staff receive information, as they're going out and connecting, networking, because we do go to the Rockdale, um, networking once a month.
Coalition.
Coalition once a month, so I do have case managers who attend that, um, coalition once a month, and so, as they get information, they go back and they take it back, and we provide that information to the, uh, to the other case managers, so that they can get out and let, educate families of what we do have available here in Rockdale.
And I've seen them there. You're well represented.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for, uh, Ms. Veronica?
Um, can you tell us in your, um, scope about, you have a full-time employee that promotes, um, foster care in our community?
Foster homes.
Foster homes.
Mm-hmm. Well, that person actually started yesterday. Um, we had, we've had a large, we've had a huge turnover in, um, foster care in Rockdale since July, and so, we just hired a case manager to start on, like I say, yesterday, and she's very familiar, she's, uh, actually lives in Covington. She's been a resident of Covington for 17 years. Um, she's, um, based on the information that was provided to us, she will be doing a lot of reaching out in the community. Uh, we, right now, my supervisor's filling in the gap, Mr. Sean West. He's been going out, uh, to the communities, um, Kroger, daycares, um, recruiting foster parents. That is a great need here in Rockdale. Um, right now, we do have about 25 foster homes, but out of the 25, about seven of those are actually active fostering. The most of, the majority of those families, they're interested in adopting, so that's what we have in the gap. We also just opened up, well, not us, in our community, we just, uh, the child placing agencies. That's a challenge for, um, the local DFACS agencies, because based on the per diem that they pay their foster parents and the different things that they're allowed to do, which our hands a little bit more tied because of the federal government, uh, government, they have, they just recruited 35 foster homes here between our county and Walton County, so that's pretty challenging for our, for us as an agency, but I do know that we have a great need for foster parents, um, here in our community, and that would make a big difference for our children being placed so far out in the commute, away from their families.
So, are you saying that other organization basically competes with you for foster home placement?
I'm not going to say more of compete, a competitive situation. I'm going to say that they have more as for specialized, for children who have special needs, the, the training that they provide, um, their foster homes. We do not have the training, um, for that, so when they are able to get our children who, like I say, are severe, maybe medical fragile. And we do not have foster parents who are trained. We do not have the actual, um, scope of training to provide that for our foster parents here, the fam, families here in our community. So, they're more or less like a support, not a competition, um, for our agency.
Okay. And can you give us a phone number for anybody that may be interested in foster care?
Um, you threw me off. I wasn't expecting that.
Sorry.
Um, hold on one second. Yes. I think, um, I'm, I'm, I don't have it, but I can get that to you. Um, I know it's something Georgia, Dr. Child.
Let me just give them a remaining number here, so that they can be transferred.
But I can give you, I can give you one of my case man, is, the number I was looking for was a 1-800 number, but I can give you the supervisor who's over the resource development and adoption. Yes, yes. And that's Sean West, and that's S E A N. His contact number is 404-275-6657, and that's his cell number.
All right. And I wanted to just, um, maybe reflect on a number that you gave earlier for average, uh, food stamps in our community. The average amount monthly is $304.45.
That's probably about the average, but, uh-
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Well, Ms. Veronica, uh, first, uh, any more question for Veronica Parrott?
No.
Okay. Veronica, thanks so very much. Uh, thanks for coming by when you first came on board and introduced yourself, and, uh, we wanted to also thank your five board members who, uh, in Rockdale County, who serve, uh, who serve in setting up the standards, uh, for the expenditures for the Rockdale County funding. We want to say thank you to your board members as well. Uh, I want to, for the, just for the public, uh, um, the programs and services that she provides, or the DFACS provides, about 77% of the funding goes towards services and programs. Only about 21% goes toward operations. And then, there's about a 2% that goes for per diem, for the volunteer members of the board, and that's for travel. And they keep us abreast of what's going on. We want to say thank you for your service and continue to, uh, do what you guys doing. It's challenging out here because there are so many people. We have 9.45% unemployment, so those, until we get those numbers down, then we're going to continue to have those kinds of requests for food stamps. Uh, there are a lot of youth, between 8 to 21 to 29, 30, that are, have children, uh, and they, they're working, they're working, but they don't make enough money. So, I just want to say thank you for coming out this morning.
Would you like to say?
Can I be excused?
Yes, you're excused. Uh, let's go with, uh, Dr. Hoffer, the Health Department, please. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, commissioners. Appreciate the opportunity to be here today, and understand that we're here, uh, at the request of, uh, of Commissioner Van Ness. They have a couple of questions for us, so we're happy to be here. I have had a lot of caffeine this morning. I had a cup of coffee down there. I usually drink decaf, so I'm really wired up, but before I say anything, let me introduce Mr. Jim Griffin, who's with us, who's our Director of Operations. Let me make sure to wish you all a very happy Thanksgiving and happy holiday season, in case I forget and get wound up, so.
Yes.
Commissioner?
Uh, yes, I just, can you compare your budget last year to this year?
It's pretty much a continuation budget. We've asked for a 4% increase to cover really the cost of, uh, of our, of our staffing. We've asked for a, uh, 4% raise for our, our staff that have not had one for a while, and that's been approved by the board. We also have an increase in our, um, indirect costs, uh, for our employees. Our fringe rate is about 60% now, which has gone up several percent each year, so this is pretty much a continuation budget. Most of the budget dollars that we have for our Health Department are actually in the, in personal services, in other words, for hiring employees. It's not brick and mortar, and it's not so much for supplies. It's mainly to have staff, and basically, our staff generates about 34% of the total budget for the Health Department, so we have to sort of prime the pump there and try to make sure that we have people that are, are there and can function to see clients, because those clients, in turn, you contribute revenue that supports this, a level of services we're able to provide. So, it's pretty much a continuation budget.
Okay. All right. And have your, your fees at the Health Department been raised this year?
If you remember that, uh, we asked the County Commission if we could raise those for the, our environmental health services, because the environmental health services, cost of inspecting restaurants and subject tanks and things has increased, and you all provide that. But our general clinic fees are usually tied to what we do for Medicaid, in other words, are based on the Medicaid rate. We are not allowed really, uh, to charge, uh, less than the Medicaid rate. Uh, if we do that, then we have to turn around and lower all the Medicaid reimbursements that we get to that rate, because they always want to pay the lowest rate, so that pretty much sets our rate for most of our clinical services.
All right. And for some of your other programs, like WIC and things like that, what has your department done, or any other agencies that you work with, to really help people get off of the dependency of some of the programs?
The WIC program specifically is designed for, is women, infant, and children's nutrition program, and most of the people are either pregnant or they're within the first year of delivery and things, um, for the children. And so, at that point in time, they've got a lot of things that are on their minds, so to speak, and we're trying to focus them on basically having the healthiest pregnancy that they can to deliver a baby that's not going to basically require a lot of, of high-risk nursery or other type of, uh, conditions that would, uh, be bad for that child's ultimate development, and would also be expensive to go through. After they're a year old and things, we're trying to make sure that the mother interconnects with other programs that are offered by the Health Department, such as family planning. There's spacing children, sometimes it works out better, not only for the family economically, but it also works out better for repeat pregnancies. There's less complications with that. So, we tend to try to refer them to, uh, other programs that we have ourselves, that we know about for health. As far as trying to do things to, uh, to reduce on their dependency and things, uh, from an economic program, we're really not set up to do that, and it's beyond really the scope of the federal program to include things along that line. So, they only, um, pay for it, it's a U.S. Department of Agriculture program, and basically, it provides, um, support, but it also pays farmers to, and people to grow those products and things like that. That's why it's in the Ag Department, so it's pretty much tied to basically a food nutrition program. But there are nutritional counseling things, as opposed to, say, food stamps, where a person gets food stamps and can spend them on what they like. They actually have a list of exactly what they can buy and purchase off that, and that's how the, uh, the WIC program operates, so they get nutritious foods for them and for their children during that period of time.
Are there vouchers that are, um, given for, like, the farmer's market that we have locally?
Yes, I think so. I know that's true in Newton County, and I believe it's true as well. Most of the thrust is to try to get them to eat nutritious things, so they get, for example, milk and dairy, and they get, um, fruits and vegetables. They're not allowed to buy cigarettes or alcohol or something like that, or, uh, things, so it's a pretty limited thing that the children would eat. But yes, there are, there's some specific things that they do for farmer's markets. They also support and try to do, we have what we call peer breast counselors and things, where we have ladies who have actually breastfed their children. We try to extend the period of time that the mother actually breastfeeds. We find initially that most of them will, will breastfeed maybe for, you know, anywhere from two to six weeks, and then as they begin to get back with the complications of life, they will tend to drop and things, so that, we have peer counselors that do that.
It's a very good program. Um, can you tell me a little bit, I know, and this may not be through the Health Department, but there was, um, someone that presented to us at one time and talked about some of the new things that they're doing as far as during the pregnancy time period of group counseling for people. Do you know, do you know what I'm speaking of? Do you remember that? No?
Uh, we don't have a program like that, but I know what you're talking about. The idea is to have a group visit where the mothers can get basically peer support.
That's right.
And they also can bond with other ladies, they're about the same, uh, delivery date.
Right.
And so, that gives them someone to kind of, uh, talk to and work through, not just during their pregnancy, but also when they get home and things, they can, uh, you know, talk to them about issues that come through. A lot of that pioneering work has been done in Dorde County, down in the Albany area for the state, and they've received special funds. Uh, one of the, uh, issues that, uh, the state, uh, Health Department's working on is trying to, is trying to reduce infant mortality, and so, they have selected targeted areas for the state, you know, to invest all those funds. Gwinnett, Newton, and Rockdale Counties are not in those targeted areas, so we've not been funded to do specific programs.
Is it the more rural areas that they're focused on?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know at one time, we discussed, uh, low birth weights, and that was one of the goals, was really to increase those birth weights. Do you have any statistics on that?
I can, I can provide some for the state and for our area, but I did not bring any with me today, and I'm going to have to ask Jim for a pen, so I can write that down. Excuse me for a second.
Okay.
Let me make a note of that, and I'd be glad to, uh, provide.
And on your budget for line item State PH 001 Grant and Aid, can you explain that for me?
Uh, I'm not looking at, may I approach and look?
Sure.
Okay. Grant and aid, okay. We receive program funds from the states. It's called grant and aid. It comes in a general grant and aid, which is not specifically strings attached to any specific program. It's kind of like the mayonnaise that holds the sandwich together, in other words, it just kind of spread out there, and we use that to sort of supplement and kind of put in where other programs are weak. The other type of grant aid is called programmatic grant aid, and that's a mixture of state and federal dollars, kind of mixed in, and they're specifically required. For example, the WIC program, dollars that come to that program can only be spent in the WIC program. Uh, dollars that come in, for example, with, uh, other program like scoliosis or another program, can only be spent in those programs, and so, if we wind up running out of money, or we wind up with something that's changed during that period of time, and there's no additional funds, we either have to send someone home and stop the program at that point, or we try to take these generalized funds that we can use and kind of move those around to try to do this. This also lets us have a program person that can do more things. For example, if you're doing one program, say immunizations today, and it's a slow day because it's raining and things, but you have a lot of folks coming in for another program, because they're on general grant aid, we can move them to that program as well, so it allows us flexibility, and it's one of the things that's probably the best benefit that we have from the, uh, from the budget. Over the last years, with the growth of Rockdale County, as well as Gwinnett, Newton, and, uh, some of the others around the state, uh, you were funded basically at a level of about 1973, 1976 level, and so, it has not reflected the growth of the county and population, but with the growth of the population, you have a growth of the need for services as well. I think you know that, uh, you can see that, not only for infectious disease, but also just in the, in the need for services in your own community. And so, they're in a process of a seven-year plan to try to, if you will, to try to restore, try to build back the grant and aid for folks that have, um, have basically been short-changed by not changing and following that formula over the last, uh, 20 years or more. And so, we're in about year four of that coming up, and then by the end of seven years, hopefully, we would, where we would be funded at a level according to our size.
All right. So, so that money gives you the flexibility. If you saw high numbers for diabetes in our community, you would have the ability to focus more efforts on that?
Well, right now, we're using those dollars to basically fund the staff to do the programs that we're required to do by law. So, in other words, for example, we have to have a scoliosis screening program. There are no dollars for that, so we use it for programs that are basically unfunded mandates and things, but we don't really have enough money specifically to take that So in other words, for example, we have to have a scoliosis screening program. There are no dollars for that, so we use it for programs that are basically unfunded mandates and things. But we don't really have enough money specifically to take that as sort of free money to use and put into programs that we think, you know, need that. We did have, as far as it goes in primary care, we don't offer any primary care, both acute or chronic, in our Health Departments, with exception of treatment of sexually transmitted diseases. We do, the reason we don't is we don't have a specific funding source. At one time, we had a hypertension program here that Dr. Smith was the physician onboard. We basically, he worked with our nurse practitioners and our expanded role nurses, and we basically did chronic treatment and management of high blood pressure. And when something came up that was outside the protocol, they could refer them to Dr. Smith. Dr. Smith came by and looked at these folks. So basically, they had the best of all worlds. They had a Health Department they could come to without much expense, and they also had the technical expertise of Dr. Smith. And it kind of takes both of those, but we paid Dr. Smith, and he was worth, he gave us a good rate. I can tell you, he's a fine man, but he also, there was a charge there to do that. And so as that program, the dollars for the drugs dropped out of that program, there was no way to really sustain that.
So what happens when somebody comes in and they do have an acute or chronic illness? Where do, where do your staff refer them to?
Well, there's usually, in general, there's what you would call a safety net provider and things that you would have. For example, your O-Kirst federally qualified health surgeon would serve as one. There are other programs that have.
N.C. Heart.
There are certain doctors that have been generous in the past with their time and have had the ability to sometimes take patients on a one-to-one referral. But as you can imagine, that's sometimes hit or miss, because sometimes they've had staff turnover, and they can't do that all the time. So it's kind of a hit or miss. If they're sick and they have acute care and there's no place that they can find, they wind up going usually to the emergency room.
What does your staff, or how are they best trained so that people know the options and don't go to the emergency room? Because of course, you can imagine the enormous burden that it puts on a community, especially the hospital itself.
We, in the past, we have done basically surveys by calling the doctors and asking them if they're taking new patients and would they be willing to take some that are Medicaid or they're not doing that. We found that over time that that has not been as effective as we, as we would have thought, because their situations change. And so where they might tell us today, yes, we're taking new patients, we'd be glad to take patients like that. They have staff turnover, something happens, they can't do it, their partner goes on sick leave, different things happen. So suddenly, when the patients call, they're not ready, they're not accepted and things. So it's, it's kind of almost a hit or miss type of a proposition.
But you could have a brochure in your, available.
We can give them things that list kind of sources to go through, and we certainly, I think you talked to us on the phone about that, and want to make sure that we had that more available than what we have now.
English and Spanish?
Yes.
Okay, very good. All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Dr. Hoff, Dr. Hoff, thank you. Just briefly, I know I sit on that board by virtue of elected position, and the board has great attendance, so I appreciate that. And I was really impressed with the, have been impressed with the going for the certification to take us to a higher level and the complication of getting additionally certified with multiple counties. And I'm impressed because we're being the model for the country. Could you kind of briefly explain that? And then secondly, I want to also just lift up that we are on point in terms of monitoring everyone who comes into the Department of Health about this Ebola scenario.
Yes, let me just say, Chairman Oden wanted me to just mention a brief bit about what's called public health accreditation. Until recently, there was no such thing as a national accrediting body for public health departments. And one was formed, and over the last few years has come up with sort of some testing and some criteria for what it would be to be an accredited health department. The goal of being an accredited health department, other than having this kind of a sticker to put on your, your letterhead, would be to try to show and demonstrate to communities like this one that there's a certain level of quality and national skill that you meet. And as such, that's worthy of funding and worthy of maintaining and worthy of keeping, and hopefully that would have an impact on the business community as others, that they are getting a good quality service. Currently, there's probably less than 70 accredited health departments in the United States, because the first accredited ones just came out. Cobb County has already had their visit, Cobb Douglas, for accreditation. The only other ones that are applying right now are DeKalb, and then Gwinnett, Newton, and Rockdale are applying. Because DeKalb's a single county, most health departments are credited as a single county, it's usually fairly easy. But there's a category called multi-jurisdictional, which certainly is the way that we operate. And as such, we're applying as multi-jurisdictional. Currently, they do not have, and that's what Chairman Oden's referring to, any real criteria set up for how to do that, because they don't have any that have applied under that. But apparently, we're one, and there's another one somewhere in the United States that's also looking at applying. Currently, we have turned the clock. We've paid our money to the Public Health Accreditation Board, and so we are in the process of uploading documents and things. It takes a period of time. Usually, the accreditation process is not something that they can say, you're missing this, so you can go ahead and supply it. They want to look back at three years' worth of work and make sure that you have these things in, in process during that time. So we're excited about the aspect of doing that. We hope that that's going to lead to more funding from us on the national level and federal level. We're hoping that grant funders will be able to say, if you're a credit health department, you can skip this part and just go on to this other. If it doesn't turn out to have some financial advantage to us, then I think we're going to have to look and decide, you know, whether the accreditation is worth the financial cost of doing it. At the same token, we've learned a lot through the accreditation process to, you know, we think to make us a better functioning health department. And Chairman Oden, you asked a little bit about Ebola. Many of you are aware that yesterday, that, or late Sunday, they added the country of Mali to, to the Ebola watch list and things. But when the Ebola concern came out, our Health Department folks were really on the front line, because people could be walking around and come in, and they could be sick, and in many countries, they don't know where to go. They might come into the Public Health Department. So this community, as well as Newton and Rockdale, met together, police, fire, hospital folks came together for a, basically, almost a half a day meeting, and sat down and looked and tried to work through some scenarios to make sure that if, until we got guidelines, until the state could come up with their plan, and they did come up with a very good plan, that we had something we could work on here. But right now, we have someone basically interdicting and talking to the folks as they come into the Health Department. The goal is to make sure that if you're coming to the Health Department, any of your family members, that you don't find out at the end of the day that we've had someone with Ebola in the Health Department, and you're there, they've been there all day sitting next to you, and then you wonder about your own safety. Your own safety under that circumstance would be, would be minimally affected. But the same token, it would probably cause some distress. And so basically, what we do is we have someone to interdict them at the door and ask them questions about their travel history, if they have it. We bring them off to the side and things, if they have symptoms, and we, we interconnect with the state. If they're, they're healthy and things, and they're already on the list, then they're, they're free of infection, they come forward and go get their services. So we are looking at doing that. We also have staff that are trained to go out, should they actually need to go out to someone's house. They know how to put on personal protective equipment and things, and have had practice doing that, and so they're ready to go out to someone's house, should we have a quarantine situation that would come up. And so we appreciate our staff doing that very much.
I think, the reason I want you to lift that information up for the community is because it's important for the community to know that Rockdale, Gwinnett, Newton County, and our Health Department combined has been very proactive. Our team set up their, to set up their perimeter operations, and they became very engaged as to if this, if this became an issue in our community, that we would be in a better position. The state now has since come up with a protocol process, and we're right in line, and I want to say, I want that to be known, that, say thank you for that. So we appreciate you coming out today and this morning.
Thank you. We appreciate the support of the, of the Rockdale County Commissioners, and appreciate you being on our board, sir.
Okay.
Dr. Hoff, I want more question. What are the accreditation fees that were paid?
Accreditation fees for us, I believe, was right about $47,500 for the three counties. We actually get a break by combining them. It's by population size. Small areas under like 7,000 get so much and things, so we're right at a little over a million. But if each one of them did them separately, it would be more than that. We were fortunate to receive a grant from Healthcare Foundation of Georgia to cover the entire application process for us. So that's one reason that helped us to decide to go ahead and do that. So there's no money that's spent on that behalf. Should we have paid for it? We pay a pro-rata share based on population size, so you wouldn't have had it third, 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 you would have had it based on your population size.
So it's $47,000 total for all three, as in what the jurisdictional?
Yeah, I think, please don't quote me. I think it's 47.5, but I don't remember. Jim, do you remember?
And then what are the annual fees, do you?
There really are no annual fees for that. Accreditation lasts for about a, I think it's a five-year period. And then during that time, you have to go through a re-accreditation process if you want to. Right now, they haven't figured that out, because no one's been accredited. It's close to five years. They've only been accredited for one year or less, and so they're working on how that process will actually work.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Let's go now, item number three here, proposed pay plan amendments, Human Resources, please.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. Michelle Saunders, Human Resources. Our recommendation is for the Board of Commissioners to approve a 2% pay-for-performance salary increase to all employees who meet or exceed expectations on their 2014 performance evaluations. We estimate that this will include about 98% of our work population, and based upon the schedule for administration and calculation of performance evaluations, increases will begin on the last pay period in June of 2015. Additionally, we are recommending the county adopt a premium pay plan to incentivize our employees to enhance their skill set through additional training, certifications, and education. The projected median increase per employee would be about 3% of their current annual salary, using a median annual salary of $36,715.
Can you explain what that would look like and how you've decided who, who's going to be eligible for the certain benefits?
Sure, absolutely. We look at all positions and see what is required according to the position description. If, for example, to be a Human Resources Generalist, it's required that I have a bachelor's degree. If we hire a Human Resources Generalist that has a master's degree, there's a certain level that they're bringing to that position. So we, to incentivize them to come to work for Rockdale County, we're going to give them a little bit additional, a certain percentage above what we would give somebody that has the required certification or educational background.
Now, is that, that's different, though, than what you're talking about here. This would apply to the current people that are employed. What you're talking about is, I think, the third proposal that you have this morning?
No, this is a, right now, we don't have any type of premium pay policy affecting Rockdale County.
Right, and there was a third proposal on the table about giving flexibility up to 15%.
No, that's included in the premium pay. That's, you can, you'll max out at 15%. For example, people that work in fire and rescue are eligible for certain certifications, and so they can have multiple certifications with a maximum of up to 15%. So they could have a master's degree, which will qualify them for a 10% incentive. In addition, they could have a certification as a diver, which may qualify them for an additional percentage.
Okay. And do you have a chart that explains that?
We have a proposed plan.
Is it in?
Yeah, we have a structured plan that we're going to final review for release by the chairman. We had a proposal here if you need to see it. But we have a structure based on industry standards, surveys, and go, we looked at each job family, each career series, and use market data, and had input also from the subject matter experts in department here to determine what are the standard certifications for each career field, and to weigh them appropriately based on what level of incentive would apply for each job classification, each category for current employees.
But you don't have a grid today for us to look at?
We don't have the plan in final format for, for adoption today. It's in draft form right now.
When will we get that? Because I've been waiting on that for the Fire Department for quite a while and haven't seen it yet.
Well, if, if we realize it's a draft, you're welcome to look at the draft. We didn't come prepared to only talk about the money, set aside, and appropriations needed for it. But if you, if it's okay with the chairman, you can see the draft.
See, draft, let me just say that in terms of this premium pay plan, we're looking at the whole system as a system-like plan. The fire will be no different than the Sheriff Department, basically, a very similarly situated plan. But what's clearly important is that, as opposed to a cross-board, four, five, six, seven, eight percent, the county needs to look at how we're going to do pay for performance. What that means is that you've got to earn your money. It's because you put the money on the table, don't mean you're going to get it. That helps us in a number of different ways from a management standpoint. What that would do is allow the managers, as we set our departmental goals from this particular perspective, is to evaluate that person on his or her performance, whether that, on that 2% side. On the premium pay side, it would be no different, basically, than what you, what you approved last year for the sheriff, increments of certificates. I mean, that's, that's just something which we're still looking at, a college degree, a master's degree. Because what we have experienced this year, system-wide, is a loss of critical employees across the board because of our no-premium-pay plan, which is a part of this budget process to retain people if we can. We still kind of will be under the market value, but this plan is asking for a 2% on pay performance. That's going to cover about 98% of the population of our employees. And the premium pay plan will probably be about a much lesser, much lower number, because you just, it would encourage people to go to get greater certificates or greater, you know, diploma, or continue to get their education a little bit more. So the premium pay gives that person more incentive. So the higher level of employer we can train and maintain will help us considerably. So that's, it's like a draft, it's really like similar to the Sheriff Department that you approved last year. So I want to take one more look at that and, and make sure that those numbers are in line, because we have a whole lot more different positions than, than the sheriff do. So that's certainly, we can release that to this, to this team before next week, so they can get a good view of that and see. But I just wanted to explain that, so everyone can clearly know that in this budget, it's asking for a 2% performance, pay performance. That's not something we're creating, it's been out here, and I just think it's just better for us to do it that way.
And that would not hit until the end of June?
June. It would be effective, we, hopefully, if this is approved, we go into effect June, mid-June 2015.
Right. And why, why wouldn't it take effect in January? We've done performance evaluations.
Because we won't, we won't have completed the performance evaluation cycle for 2014. That won't be completed until late April, early May. And so it will, so the plan will be for the 2014 year, but it just won't be paid out until June, the end of June.
So what's your budget impact just for that?
For the 2%, roughly about $256,000.
Okay. So annualized, it's more about?
Well, it would be for, for the six-month period from June, or really from July 2015 through December 2015, so about $256,000.
If you annualize that, maybe four, five, five hundred thousand?
Five, ten, yeah.
Right.
So let me ask Mr. Boyd now, as it relates to the 5% across-the-board proposal that I presented to Human Resources, which should take effect, if it was implemented, it should take effect in the beginning of January or in January. How does that compare to what you're doing? And while you're thinking of that answer, let me just point out, I am certainly in favor of the pay-for-performance merit-type increase for our employees, as well as the premium pay that we've given to the Sheriff's Office as well. I think both of those plans are very ideal for our employees. I think primarily because we've gone such a number of years without giving our overall employees a pay increase, which is why I've proposed the 5% increase. So my proposal is the 5% increase, and then as we move forward, begin to look at things or plans such as the pay-for-performance, as well as the premium pay as well. I'm trying to get a handle or an understanding on what happened to that proposal, or where are we with that in terms of my proposal about the 5% increase across the board for all employees, however, with the exception of the Sheriff's Office.
Yeah, Commissioner, I think that we provided the numbers for the 5% across the board that you proposed. However, what we're speaking to today is the component that was part of the chairman's budget that's proposed, that's going out. And what we wanted to do in that instance is, and what we recommended was building structure that will have a long-lasting effect, because the baseline of all compensation programs is to incentivize desired behaviors. And so that's why we propose that we incentivize the increasing of knowledge and skills and reward.
Well, you, if you, I hear you, and I appreciate the clarity that this is the chairman's proposal, and I respect that. We would certainly incentivize desired behaviors if we give all of our folks a five percent across-the-board increase and then move into the premium plan as well as the pay-for-performance plan moving forward. But you've given me my answer, so I don't want to debate that issue. My next question and concern is, have there been something put in place to make sure that our frontline supervisors and our mid-level supervisors, who will be assessing and doing the evaluations per employees? Have they been trained as to make sure we give accurate and the appropriate rating when we're rating employees? Because that's another area that we have to be concerned about, making sure that folks are being assessed and evaluated properly, that we're giving the right points, if there's a point system, that they will receive the right dollar amount based upon the performance moving forward. What have we done in that area, sir?
Yes, we train throughout the year for supervisor training, own employee ratings, employee evaluations, how to conduct. And we usually conduct trainings on that particular subject prior to the launch of the performance appraisal period.
Okay, and you also mentioned that you collaborated with the department heads about this overall proposal.
We received their input as well as industry data.
How did you receive it? In what form? That's what I'm trying to figure out. What way did you get their buy-in or their input and their feedback to endorse, to support this plan? I just want to make sure I'm understanding what you're saying because the department heads work directly with the people. And if I'm proposing a five percent, and here we are, looking at this particular plan, the people are going to be looking at the frontline supervisors as to what happened.
Most submissions were by email. We made a request for everybody that were subject matter experts in that particular field to submit what were the normal certifications, what warranted exceptional pay, what were the more hazardous assignments, what were the, for example, for firefighter EMT, what is beyond the call of duty for that classification, they should receive incentive. And it was submitted by the department heads primarily.
Let me just kind of help clear that up a little bit as well because when you look at operations, running operation, and I've spent many years in corporate America, successful corporations, Fortune One Hundred companies, and the pay performance plan is simply that our managers and supervisors are well-qualified in some areas to evaluate these employees based upon the goals and objectives that we set annually, based upon the vision statement and mission statement of this county. And I want everyone to know that our vision statement simply states that Rockdale County is a perfectly positioned community with a rock-solid approach dedicated to excellence in customer service, quality of life, and global economic development. That's the foundation of all of our goal-setting premises. Excellence in customer service, improving quality of life, and how we grow about economic development. So every one of our members in our team should know their vision and mission statement. From there, we set goals and objectives annually, and each department submits those goals and objectives on a monthly basis. And we look at those goals and objectives, and we quantify, and we also evaluate the performance of each person in this organization based upon those goals and objectives set by the managers. We meet on a monthly basis with the directors, and we also meet on a monthly basis with the leadership team. So in terms of informing the team, preparing this team for a pay-performance scenario, we've been practicing this now for about two years. If you remember last year, I put on the same, the table, on the table, the same plan, basically, pay for performance and premium pay. So this will be year two if that had been passed. Unfortunately, that particular one didn't pay, go through, but we gave that all to the sheriff. I want everybody to know that.
Mr. Chairman, that's not how you presented it last year at all.
It was presented as a pay for performance and a plan, and a plan. So that's what we are, that's what we are. So this year, we're asking for this, basically, the same program going forward for all the employees. And I think either the five percent, our proposal is two percent on pay for performance and three percent. Now that we have presented this package, now Commissioner Nesbit respectfully says, his plan says five percent across the board, and we'll deal with that other stuff going later. Is that correct?
My plan clearly says, Mr. Chairman, that my proposal includes all of our employees with the exception of the sheriff's office for a five percent across-the-board increase. And I appreciate you giving me the opportunity to elaborate just a little bit further on that. Our employees have suffered over the last four-plus-six years. We've received a few bits and pieces and patchwork here and there. It's time, if we're going to talk about employee retention, to go ahead and step up to the plate. Let's give the employees the five percent across-the-board increase as well as implement a comprehensive pay-for-performance plan as well as the premium plan. I like the premium incentive. I work with incentives all day with my employees over at the leadership. So I clearly understand what an incentive does for an employee. At the same time, I understand making sure those people are getting compensated properly for the work that they're putting out on a day-to-day basis. So I support a pay-for-performance, but for the immediate. It's been long overdue that we give Rockdale County employees the five percent that they, that I'm proposing and then implement those other two plans that you're talking about. So I think in the best interest of moving the county forward, employee retention and stepping up to the plate with these incentive programs, that's where I'm leaning, and I'm going to continue to advocate on that. I respectfully hear what the chairman is saying, I hear the proposal that you're presenting. All of what you're presenting today, I take it and understand that this is Chairman Oden's proposal. And that's why you have post-one as well as post-two. As he just said, we're going to listen throughout the rest of the day. We're going to take all of it in and absorb it, and then we will come back with what we believe is in the best interest of each and every taxpayer of Rockdale County as well as the employees who represent this fine government. Thank you so much.
Very good comments, and thank you so much. Appreciate you, Doug. Any more questions?
Yes, Mr. Boyd, I'd love to see that draft today before we get out of session, if I could. I would be in favor of.
I second that motion. I'd like to see it too because he talked about it being a draft. And at this point, we're way beyond the draft point. We need a final version of whatever it is that you have. I was not convinced that you have a final version of anything. You talked about having a draft, and I certainly like to see a written, hard-copied draft, a final version of whatever it is that you have that supports what you're presenting this morning. Is that okay?
We've got that. We can provide that.
Thank you so much.
So, you know, my interest is, you know, maybe it's just, I like to operate on a schedule of January to February because that is our financial year. But I really feel like if we're going to do two percent, you should have had these evaluations done this year. And I know I've gotten several emails about the evaluations. I don't understand the delay toward the end of June. That's a big carrot to dangle with nothing there to support it. So my recommendation would be, if we're going to move forward with that, that we look at a January-through-December cycle and put that into place. And I'll look forward to the draft form for the other recommendations. And yes, we did prioritize public safety with the sheriff's department for their incentive plan because of the hemorrhaging in that department. We were having a lot of experienced and well-trained officers leaving that department, which in turn was costing the taxpayers tenfold in many ways. So that was a priority, but I must say that they had a very professional, well-put-together plan that was hard to refuse, quite honestly. They had a solution to a very big problem, and we've yet to see the solution from this organization.
Yes, they did, and they were not a burden, and it is not a crutch. So for us to continue to reflect back as to what we did for our public safety, which is the primary concern for every resident in this community, public safety, we shouldn't do that. We've done what we've done, we've made the decision, and we've enhanced the sheriff's office. It wasn't a burden, it's not a crutch, it's time to move forward. My concern are the rest of the employees that work for this county.
Any other comments?
Yes, sir.
Any other comments? And my closing statement on this matter is that the same plan we put on the table last year for the employees of this county, yes, eight-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars for pay performance and premium plan. So thereby, there again, we put it on the table last year, and everyone, including the sheriff department, could have been well taken care of last year. So we could be moving to this year. So we put the same plan back on the table, and public safety is critically important. But also, also, those departments who support public safety is critically important as well. So that's the statement I want to put on the table, and you have the proposed budget. And I expect to this budget to be looked at by the commissioners and looked at all departments and voted upon, including the five percent offered up by Commissioner Nesbit. And we'll look at that, the three of us will decide which one's going to be the best for the best use of those dollars for all the employees as we run this operation into 2015. In terms of evaluation, you evaluate from January through December. And you, and you render your evaluations in the following year for the previous year, January, February, March. And that's why we looked at a June first implementation of this particular plan. So that's where that starts at. Thank you also very much, and please get that information, the draft, which is really all it needs. You just take the draft off and it becomes a copy. It's basically the same plan that we submitted last year.
Don't take draft off if it's not complete now. Draft is there to say that it's not.
It's complete, mister. So if you'll get that back to everyone, then we'll move forward, okay?
No, the implementation, you said June first, she said June thirty.
June thirtieth, whatever that date is.
I was using the last pay period in June.
Last pay, that'd be the last day, okay, very good, thank you. Okay then, thank you, HR, appreciate that. Now let's go to the next item, number four, human resources.
Human resources. For the items requested above the base share, we're requesting sixteen thousand dollars funds for the federally mandated drug testing program. And this amount was satisfied minimum, the minimum DOT requirements of randomly drug testing, ten percent of all safety-sensitive positions. Next item, advertising. We're requesting thirty-seven hundred dollars. This reflects the actual full year's advertising budget for targeted positions, hard-to-find positions, difficult positions. We have to go to specialized publications, et cetera, to generate a qualified candidate pool.
And what are examples of that?
We didn't provide examples in this proposal, but there have been a number of departments that have difficulty recruiting positions such as Forrester in planning and development. That's one example, E-nine-one-one dispatches. And we went through the publications and the extra advertising besides that, which we normally use, usually a cost of average of two-hundred-and-fifty and then, and sometimes more for that type of advertising, for difficult to recruit for positions. And money that either departments submitted from their budget or took from other places in order to fund the needed advertising, the last full year was thirty-seven-seven-three, thirty-seven-hundred-and-seventy-three dollars, and that was the basis for this particular proposal. But previously, we.
And that's under professional services?
Oh, that's under advertising.
Okay.
Next, on the education and training. We're requesting eighteen thousand, seven hundred for local government management training and certification at the Carvinson Institute for Directors. This program initially, we're hoping to do for directors, but hopefully for the entire executive team. Some of our directors in executive management have some continuing education in their field of profession, but in the highly regulated environment of local government, we haven't, in my time, had any training for directors in regard to being more efficient or effective in local government. The Carvinson Institute not only provides the instructors that will come on campus, but they also will provide books, materials, individualized assessments, and ongoing coaching for that amount.
Can I ask you a question? In previous years, you've had, I think it's a video series of training that you did, and it was quite expensive. Tell me how you're still using that today.
I've never used a video series since I've been here.
Okay, and it might have been the year before you were here, so you're not using a video series at all?
No, we had no training for executive management.
And for your training budget last year, what type of training did you do?
The training was not designed for executive-level management, it was mostly supervisory training or employee training on safety.
Okay.
Mr. Boyd, just backing up just a tad to the, back to the advertisement for a quick second. The four-thousand-three-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars that you're requesting for 2015's budget, this advertising, does that include the recruitment efforts similar to what you all did with the fire department this year? I know there was tons of the banners on all of the fire stations and some of the things you did to kind of enhance the recruitment. Is that included?
It encompasses efforts like that because of many tasks, because our budget did not contain enough funds for specialized advertising and recruitment. Departments had to go within their own individual budgets to, that came out, actually, out of the fire department's budget. But there are other, like nine-one-one, and we, I think we did use some of HR's budget to do extra advertising also for the firefighters as well. But there are a number of positions that are difficult to recruit for, that we have heavy competition for, that we have to have more than that, thirteen-hundred budgeted in order to generate a candidate pool.
Thank you.
Can we go back to professional services? What's the large increase for? It's about fifty, forty-four thousand?
The professional services would be for the, if that's the random drug testing. Is that the random drug?
It's forty-four thousand to do random drug testing?
No, I have sixteen thousand for random drug testing. I have four thousand for advertising, eighteen thousand for the training with the Carvinson Institute for Executive Leadership, twelve thousand for the proposed tuition reimbursement program or enhanced tuition reimbursement policy.
What are we reimbursed now at?
We reimburse now a total of three-hundred-and-thirty-three per semester, maximum.
And your recommendation is to go to what?
A total of two thousand per year with no restrictions on semesters. That's the proposed policy, new policy, that we've submitted for consideration.
And does it have levels, I guess, as far as like if you're getting your bachelor's or your master's or?
Well, the two thousand is for any accredited program that enhances your current job skills.
And it's two thousand per semester?
Two thousand annually.
Annually?
Annually.
Okay.
Mm-hmm.
All right, and that's what you think makes up that differential?
Those are the requests, that completes all the items that we're requesting for 2015.
You've got sixteen for?
Outside of staffing.
You've got sixteen for drugs, you've got twenty-two for training, and four thousand for the advertising.
Where'd you get twenty-two for? Oh, twenty-two total, yes.
But you started off asking him about professional services.
Professional services, specifically, just that.
Right, just that alone, because last year you were at ninety-eight thousand, this year you're?
Oh, you forgot to tell us about the retirement benefits consultant.
One forty-two. Well, don't.
That was deleted at the time, Commissioner.
No, 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 but he already summarized what he said.
Professional services?
Yeah.
I heard he grouped in with advertisement and the money for the training.
No. Retirement benefits consultant, tell us about that.
The retirement benefits consultant was deleted from the proposal for 2015. Has been deleted for 2015.
Oh, it's still on my printout, just so you know. So then the total number is not one forty-two, two thirty-nine? We would take twenty-five thousand off of that?
If you have a retirement consultant, now whatever that amount is would be taken off. I have my items itemized right here.
So what item, what item amount do you have for 2015 for professional services?
I have it by item, so I don't have anything on my list in the professional service. I have the drug testing for sixteen thousand, the advertising for four thousand, the eighteen thousand, seven hundred for the Carvinson Institute for Executive Leadership, and twelve thousand for the tuition, enhanced tuition policy. That's what.
That's different than what you submitted to Ms. Miller because my sheet doesn't say that.
This may not be the most recent amendment, but that's what the last proposal was.
And that's under technical services, not professional? So under line item two hundred, your increase was forty-four thousand, and the only thing you put there was twenty-five thousand for retirement benefits consultant?
Well, that's deleted. We were going to look at that for 2015, and we deleted that as part of 2015 proposal.
So you have another nineteen thousand that's not accounted for?
Well, those items mentioned is all we're requesting for 2015.
So finance, let's step up, justify this, clarify this.
Okay, under the professional services, what it is currently is our contract for resurgents, and it's about sixty thousand dollars. And what HR was proposing, this is up, I've heard first that we're going to delete it, but what it was the sixty thousand plus an additional twenty-five thousand for a separate consultant for the retirement benefits. But if HR is presenting, stating that you're still going to use your resurgent contract, sixty thousand?
A benefits contract.
Okay, at sixty thousand?
Well, it has to go out for bid, we're proposing go out for bid, but yeah.
So what I'm hearing is that I would amend his budget for professional services to the sixty thousand?
Instead of a hundred-and-forty-two thousand dollars?
That is correct.
Okay.
Now, Mr. Boyd, you do realize what you're saying here?
That's what it sounds.
Let me make sure he's clear. I want to make sure, don't, please don't go anywhere, Ms. Miller. I'm so glad this is a work session and we're talking about the budget, so we've got to get this right. Now, we have resurgence, who is our broker on the health insurance that we're brokering for the county. My understanding, there are some other services that are needed, and you're going to have to enlist or hire another consultant or another?
Well, no, the contract is coming, will be expiring.
Right.
So we would have to bid it out.
That's the six-thousand-dollar contract that we currently have with.
Right, but also, what is also in that line item is, I believe, is your drug testing?
Yeah, drug testing.
Yeah, his drug testing, and he's, there's a, providing a new, well, I'm not sure, a new service, but it's random drug testing. So that also is an increase, so you have the, you have the.
You have it listed under technical services? I think that's what we're looking at, has, doesn't have anything itemized out.
Yeah, the technical services is ADP. The technical services ADP only is the ninety thousand. And under professional services, it's, I guess you have drug testing?
Yeah, drug testing.
So that should be moved?
That is correct, on his justification. It's just, it's not lined up right.
That's correct. So ninety thousand is for ADP?
That is correct.
And that's just their portion of the ADP bill?
That is correct.
So our total bill is two-hundred thousand roughly? So our total bill is 200,000 roughly?
Right. Um, the other half or majority of it is in finances on budget.
And for 90,000, what services are you using with ADP?
Recruitment, benefits, performance management, all the modules are under, in the human resource benefits program.
Okay. All right. So the perform- okay, so you're using the performance piece? So once somebody has their performance, it's fed into the program, correct?
That's correct.
So why can't you just push a button and get your calculations for performance evaluations?
Because the buttons don't do the ratings, the actual employees conduct the ratings.
Right, but once that's put into the computer system, the ratings go back in the computer system, correct? Don't the managers use it, use that system? So if I give an employee a 4.7, it's in the computer, right?
Correct.
So why can't you average the two performances for the year?
Average the, average the two performances for what purpose?
For getting the evaluation to determine where they are in terms of the pay-for-performance increase.
The evaluation is done January through March, not in December or November. What, what's your, what's your point there?
My point is, if we're feeding the information for the evaluations into the ADP system, it should have a, a way that you can manipulate it so that you can get your average for performance. So if an employee has a 3.8% average, then that's the rating system and it can be then tied to the salary increase.
Possibly. That system that we currently have is very limited in its functionality, so I would be-
Have you asked them directly?
Yes, we have asked them, we've analyzed the system, that's why we have a proposal. Uh, we're looking at other systems, but it's very limited. All it does is capture data, it's static. There's very little that can be manipulated in the current system.
So you're saying that you can't look, there's no printout that will give you an average for all the ratings for every employee? There's not a printout?
I don't know that it averages and I doubt that it averages. I would have to get the HR specialist, but we have not been able to use it to manipulate it.
Have you asked them?
We've asked, they've been on-site, we've had, uh, on, to get as much as we can out of that system. But it's very limited.
Okay.
Okay, does that, uh, it looks like here that Finance and HR need to have a conversation about this variance on this particular budget item here in professional services. Uh, I heard the Finance representative, the first time she heard something, that's where is why we've been meeting for the past four months. So that's a little unusual for that conversation to take place. So that you're saying you made an adjustment that she doesn't know about, or she made adjustment that you didn't know about, and here at this time, so we have a week to make that adjustment work. So if y'all would get together and make sure these numbers are correct, uh, because this is a second, I got a book in my office, it's a different book than this, I imagine, but those numbers of, from 2014, 90,046. And for request of 142,000, 239, what we see here, which is the reason why this line of question is coming, because they want to just tell them how, how you match it up, that's what they're asking.
Ms. Miller, can you bring Claire to that while we're here on the floor?
Right. And as the Chairman stated, we've had several meetings and if the, the justification that you have in front of you and if the director's telling you that now he's removing it, that's the first that I've heard and that's the first that he's provided with that documentation. So yes, a conversation, me and the director would have to have a conversation, but I've had several meetings, discussions, provided all directors with documents of what their budget is. So if, if someone is stating that they're amending the budget, but what you have in front of you, that's the first time that I've heard from it. So I will speak with the director and we'll be able to itemize professional services out. Technical service is just ADP, but the professional services, there are several items that run into that account. The biggest portion is the resurgence contract of 60,000. And then there's other of testing, drug testing also.
How much did we spend on drug testing last year?
I believe if, in your book, I'm not sure if you have a actual column of 2013?
No, we have actual 2013, yes, we do. But then we have adopted 2014, so we don't have anything this year to date.
And it's not broken down where you can actually pinpoint?
Yeah, and I could get that broken out for you.
Okay.
But we are, we are, we do have a system in place for drug testing, correct? Random drug testing?
No, not random. We have pre-employment, reasonable suspicion, but not random.
So-
We did talk about that.
Yeah, we did. We specifically talked about it.
Absolutely, we did.
So we didn't do any random drug testing all of 2014?
Not by my records in the past decade. I cannot see why any random drug testing took place.
But you mentioned that two years ago and made a recommendation that we do that and we supported that.
It was not funded.
We talked about doing that, yes, we did.
It was proposed.
Okay.
Okay.
Any other questions for Fin- for the HR Director on this? So I, we expect to get that resolved sometime today between these two items here, so they can have the right information, so they can make the right decision going forward.
Mr. Chairman, I'd just like to ask Director Boe, what is the absolute best way, sir? When the Commissioners make a suggestion or recommendation or present a proposal, whether it be in writing or verbal, that we do something to enrich or enhance what's going on in Human Resources? What is the best method for follow-up and follow-through for either you to get back with us and make sure what you're presenting to us is in fact what we're desiring or suggesting or recommending, so that we'll know that there's been some traction based upon what we've suggested out here on the floor? Because once we make the proposal or the recommendation or a simple suggestion, we're asking that the department head will take a look at what we're presenting, do some research and some homework, and then come back to make certain that that's the wishes of the Board of Commissioners. How, what is the best way for follow-up and follow-through? Because we did talk in depth about, uh, doing the random drug testing.
Yes, I brought the proposal.
And you said it was not funded, is that correct?
That is correct.
You brought what proposal when?
He did not.
Each budget year, I brought the proposal for random drug testing.
Okay. And again, I state it wasn't funded, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Not to, not to my acknowledgement, absolutely it was not. You were ta- you talked about it. I don't care if you do 10 random drug screenings a year, that is in the best interest in the safety of our employees and the citizens in this community.
10 random drug testings would not meet compliance with DOT standards. You have to drug-
You don't meet compliance now.
We, we have to drug test at minimum 10% of the safety-sensitive positions for minimum compliance.
More than we had last year, obviously.
It's still been out, been out of compliance.
Well, you're out of compliance now, if that's what you're saying.
So you're asking for 16,000 for random drug testing this year and you asked for drug testing dollars last year, which was, was not funded, is that correct?
That's correct.
But there was dollars in there for pre-testing, all that kind of stuff, is that correct?
That's correct.
But the, but the funding was not there for drug, random drug testing last year?
Correct.
Let me say that again. The funding was not there for random drug testing last year. Okay.
Ms. Miller, were we, were we made aware that there would be no drug testing this year?
No, I don't think a plan, I think it was just presented, again, with dollars allocated for that, but there was not a plan. And he received amount, a certain amount of money in professional services.
And part of that was, and they did conduct drug screenings. Is that correct?
Yeah. I guess anything that, um, they, that's part of their operations that they need to do, it was part of that funding.
Right.
The Board didn't say, "We're not going to fund for this." They allocated funding in professional services.
And I, and I think, and, and let's, so that there's not like a tit-for-tat thing here, I think what's important is that the communication is clear going forward, because here we are again, budget season, and we're going to make proposals and suggestions and recommendations. Once we make those recommendations and once we adopt whatever budget that we're gonna settle on, as we move through the calendar year of 2015, we as a Board will be expecting those things that we have pointed out to take place. And when we go back into the budget season next year during the same time and we begin to review and we discover that things have not been addressed or implemented and we've not been called to question on them, in other words, if we give you a proposal on something and you come back to us and we don't take your recommendation or we don't follow up on our part, then that's on us. But when we leave something with the department heads or the directors to follow through, we're waiting for some feedback to come through by way of the Chairman's Office or this presentation so that we can look into it and follow up and make a decision. And if it means that we need to allocate some additional funds, that's what the people have elected these three people to do. It's our discretion to interrupt this budget throughout the calendar year, do what needs to be done to satisfy the taxpayers. So I wanna make certain that whatever we arrive to on each particular department, as we come to a complete whole and a consensus on this budget for this year, the things that we're proposing, suggesting and recommenda- recommending, whether they be in writing or verbal, that there is follow-up and follow-through. It has to happen. And there has to be some system of accountability to make sure that we're not sitting up here wasting our times.
Is any other questions for Director Boe? Y'all, so I would requ- I would like to request that all requests verbally be put into writing, so it's documented and memorialized. That way, there's no confusion. Then you can follow up and follow through. That's what I would suggest to us. Okay?
Ms. Miller does record those things that we ask for during the budget process, but I can assure you that random drug testing was nothing that we purposefully did not fund last year.
I've not had one day of Ms. Miller not getting any recommendation or proposal that I've suggested ever, since the time I've been serving. There's always complete follow-up and follow-through with the Finance Department, particularly Ms. Miller. What I'm talking about, all these other departments and right now, Human Resources is what we're addressing. There has to be com- complete communication. I think when you continue to stop at the Chairman's Office and we get to this time of the year and you don't recognize or entertain the faults and desires of the other two Commissioners, there lies a problem.
We can move on, I think you're incorrect, because you have a Chief of Staff who stepped out, takes care of some business, who is in constant communication with the both of you. He is a liaison between the Communications and the Department Head, so anything that you request from the Chief of Staff is addressed in writing. And that way, we can minimize any confusion going forward. So, uh, thank you, Director Boe. If you, Rosin, can get together on this and that I to professional services and direct that out and drill that out and put a big star by that drug, that, that, that random drug at this time, okay?